Everybody have one?
I need one.
Thank you, sir.
All is good.
Oh, my goodness. Okay, we've got to break it out, don't we?
Yeah, well, he said he could break that, he could break it out. The hundred and fifty five is the, um, um, the purchase price. I'll give the other two numbers.
Yeah, we have our, like, cause all your last, we're separate.
I'll get you the, uh, the other numbers on the incidentals. The one you should do five is just the purchase price. And it's twenty eleven.
You have another copy of this in?
Everybody got a copy of these? Do you want one?
No, sir. No, sir. No, no, you should. I had nightmares about that word stormwater drainage.
Not too personal.
No, it's, no, no, I've just heard so much about it since I've been here. Mr. Garland, did you want me to go get that rubber ducky?
Please.
Yeah, I have the one from West Broad Street.
Welcome at night, um, um. Want to sue budget review? Thank Chief again for this delicious food. I think I've seen everybody in my going tonight. Um, nobody was saying that it wanted that or it wanted that. You know it's good.
So you want to say how spicy this is?
We have a number of things to cover this evening. Uh, I must apologize for the last meeting. I had no idea that our folks would go on that long. Um, it just as a rule of thumb, I think we should get all of our budget work out of the way first before we discuss incidentals. Cause sometimes you get bogged down in these things and I don't want us here till nine o'clock. So that's, that's the whole idea. And so if you notice, I stacked the agenda where we cover all the meat and potatoes for water sewer first. And then we've got the Castro Street, uh, sewer, water sewer line replacement, Southwest Arlington Stormwater Project, and draft bulky recreation ordinance. So that, that will be for your review tonight. There's lots of information to go over. Something that's going to be new for you this evening is, um, the state of South Carolina allows us to go back three years now for millage increases, if you want to do that. We're trying to find out now what the exact, uh, value of one mill in the city of Arlington is. So once we get that, then we'll be able to tell you how much you can raise the mills if you want to do that and whether you want to just do it for one year or look back over the last two years. Um, the, the consumer price index increase this year is two point one three percent. One thing we're waiting for from the state of South Carolina and the Budget and Control Board is to look at the population. If we have an increase in population, we can raise the millage rate even more. If there's decreases, just zero percent. Those numbers won't come out until May twenty fourth, so we won't have anything final for you, whether you want to raise millage or not, until the week of May twenty fourth. It's just the way the state does business. They do the, uh, school districts first and the counties and the municipalities are always last. And that hurts us from a budget standpoint, but, you know, when we have the numbers, we'll have the numbers for you just later in this month. So that's one thing we'll hand you tonight. We're going to also give you some information about, uh, state law allowing us to raise millage rate, how that's, how that's done.
You say it could be done in twenty six?
Uh, we'll, we'll have, we'll have those numbers.
Twenty four.
We'll do the twenty four. And also we're going to get a printout of the, um, millage caps from two thousand eight all the way up to twenty eighteen. That information will come your way. Now, I'm not going to hand it out right now, because you'll start looking at it and reading it. So we want you to keep in mind on the water sewer budget, just a reminder that we do have the recreation work scheduled for May the fifteenth. Also that night, I was going to include the, uh, building and codes enforcement and also the, um, clerk of court. Those are smaller ones, we'll take that along with the courts. So those, those three things we have planned for May the fifteenth. It's Tuesday, May the fifteenth, recreation. We also would cover the court, the clerk of court and building code. Any things that may be of interest for you for recreation or those other departments, uh, just let us know and we'll try to do, you know, maybe some breakouts for you. There's just been so many questions about the stormwater and the water and sewer. And so many questions we can't really answer on stormwater, because we just signed on the bond yesterday. The new bond will, uh, take effect within the next week. Um, the bank, Sterling National Bank, will wire the fund sometime early next week. Uh, we currently have one point one three one, one million one hundred and thirty one thousand dollars in our stormwater account. That money will stay there except for interest that we have to pay B and T, which we have approximately thirty eight thousand dollars per year. And, uh, that's interest for the first year of the bond plus the thirteen thousand dollar early, uh, prepayment terms. So you take out that thirty eight thousand dollars, looking at roughly one million one hundred thousand. There's an additional, uh, eighty thousand dollars you have to pay to the bond attorney and the first triad financial for working out the particulars of this particular, uh, finance, which has been very difficult. So one point one million and then, uh, storm natural gives approximately another one point two. We'll have two point three million in that stormwater bond account as of May the ninth, I hope. And we have the building taken down at nine oh nine Pearl Street. And so we're waiting for DOT to clear, clear us to go work on the stormwater project. And I'm sorry, I told you I'm doing exactly what I said we shouldn't do, which is getting another done.
Since you brought up that building, did we save those, um, doors?
Um, they don't fit.
When they don't fit?
They don't fit. They're not, they're not, um, they explained it to me, I'm sorry. I don't, I don't understand, I'll leave it there. Well, I think we're going to have to get something that's going to be custom.
That's fine.
Brian's talking about having some doors put in at the street department. So, um, Kendrick or whoever the mechanic is can work in a bay that's cool or hot, depending on the time of year. Cause right now if you go in there in the winter, in the wintertime, it's cold, in the summertime, it's hot.
Yes, we'll get employees somewhere cool and warm to hang out.
The idea that he had was to get a garage door and put it in one of the areas, so it would cost less to heat and cool. I mean, it's a good idea. Mr. Kinsall, let's get you right down into our, our water sewer fund.
Uh, page fifty four, first page, line at one oh one, it's souring, it increases hours, it's put in a one point five percent increase. First line. Insurance combines, he says that we had finalized insurance yet because, I guess Blue Cross had to give him the final figure.
Mr. Moore said they were going to come today, but I haven't seen them yet.
But that may change a little bit of.
Some of the salaries. You want me to save my question to the very end?
Please.
And no change, you can go down to port insurance states. Port, y'all want me to read the numbers, y'all, and then we want to just go down. Retirement. Rent office supplies fifteen thousand, state's same. Post is fifteen seventeen, same. Two twelve contract O and M. We increased that. Davidson Brown asked for an increase, they're having to pay their operators more money to maintain them. There's a shortage of operators and everybody's fighting for them, like police officers.
What line is that?
Oh, two twelve. Uh, membership dues we upped a little bit because just paying the guys memberships and more environment stuff. Auto, auto expenses twenty thousand, state's same. Refund for bits, state's same. Electricity, yes, eighty fourth, state's same. Telephones five, state's same. Maintenance service contracts ninety seven hundred, state's same. So machine and equipment, line is one oh eight. Building repair, one two twenty eights, a thousand. Small hand tool, seven hundred, line two thirty one. Next page down to uniforms at, uh, line two forty one, state's same at twenty nine hundred. Chemicals, two forty eight, at twenty, state is twenty five thousand. Medical and math supplies, still twenty six hundred. Physicals up to six hundred. Meters, parks and supplies, line two fifty six, state is six thousand. Pipe fitting, Zen Hydras, two fifty seven, thirty thousand, state's same. Airbrushes, a thousand. Vehicle insurance, thirty five twenty.
That increase, that was a mandate from the Church and Turf Fund, just so you know that increase.
And on building insurance, probably the same reason, because they really went through this stuff this year. Employee training, state thirty five hundred. Professional services at forty five thousand. Permits a thousand, special contracts at sixteen five, on other operating expenses at six thousand. Just little comment on that special contract, two seventy two and sixteen five. That is, DHEC does water sample and what we pay in is DHEC to do. Agreement was made by all the work systems that we would pay. Rather than taking, have any non-bias in it, DHEC has all the samples done and they analyze them. And we paid it at, at sixteen five on that particular sub sample.
Has continued to go up as much as?
It, it stayed pretty close. It's up a few hundred, or it's jumbled a little bit. And on, see on line two eighty eight, uh, painted water tanks, that will come off, that will be on next year's budget. We're planning on Pine Street, entertaining before the budget. And the total comes out at five two eight, four five eight. And that, nine twelve. And then capital is building fixed equipment, three eighty ones, twenty five hundred, it stays the same. Uh, machines and equipment, three eighty five, twenty five thousand. Miscellaneous equipment, state is four thousand. Traffic control, state is six hundred. Three unit equipment, states is a thousand. Water line extensions is twenty five thousand. New water meters, eight thousand, state's same. And, uh, bond payback on the big bond, this will be payment four out of fifteen, at one eighty one, one seventy four. Payment four on that bond. And that total is two forty seven, two seventy four. With a grand total in the nine twelve budget at one million two sixty three, one feet. And some of the newer nine, nine twelve is water. The nine twelve budget relates to water.
How many employees do you have in this market?
Well, they really all corrupt, do everything. We don't have any real content, it's just dedicated watering, because they do what has to be done. Other than they throw in three in the office, they're not really water. Shonda's probably the only one that would be totally watering.
And Shonda can take water bills, pay them.
She takes, she can train all of us and she goes out and does reboots, cuts people off and all that stuff. And usually between her and her guy, she usually has an inmate that can replace a mate or a put a mate.
So that's, you know, lay that to drive, ride around?
Usually riding around a lot.
Oh, okay. So your total then of employees?
We will save the question for later, remember?
Oh, okay.
Write your, write your question down. See if I forget.
That's nice. All the employees, they total and everything. Okay, and then on page fifty eight eighty eight will be nine fourteen C. Nine fourteen C is sewer collections, this is the sewer pipes and the pump station. And the line one oh one salary, again, that's got the one and a half percent increase and also we've got thirty nine thousand stuck in here for potential back truck driver.
That's the person that will be responsible for the day-to-day operation of the back truck. One of those positions comes out of water sewer, one will come out of this general fund street and sanitation.
And going down, like I say, insurance, they're going to be the same thing, that's what probably fluctuates some. Retirement, everything's pretty standard on that part. So down to two twelve, O and M, contract O and M, we upped that again a little bit. First time in several years. Membership and dues, state's the same, auto operating's same, everything, rest of the base, same, telephone. Banks, service contract, machines and equipment expense, building repair, small hand tool. Painting supplies, they same. CMOM, this is stuff required by DHEC, this has anything to do with a manhole or repairing anything with a sewer to keep it from overflowing or spilling. It's called CMOM program. And in this, I've got, we kind of use it to collect money. We have a, you want to go that now?
Sure, go ahead.
Joe Louis live station, pump station, everybody's figures on the Joe Louis Boulevard. If that pump station goes down, the bypass goes down. Everything from, uh, Bay Island Seafood to B and B restaurant will shut probably for two or three days. So it would probably take us that long to get some kind of pumping system set up to bypass that lift station. We patched it about two or three months ago.
Explain how many times you fixed it.
Uh, it's, it's literally falling apart. We put new control panels and all that. Pumps are rusting out, pipes are rusting out. So it's in dire straits. The estimate to fix that lift station's about two hundred and forty thousand. What, what I want to do is, Ria has another round of grants coming up September. We've got the Ria grant tied up on the ditch, but they have one in the economic side. And we want to apply for it on the economic and use the jobs that were created on the back Walmart and all the jobs that were created in the bypass area. It's a long shot and if any big, another Volvo or anybody like comes into state, they'll give a bit of money to that big industry. But it's, you know, it doesn't cost much to apply for it. To see if we can get that and also work, do some more work on another lift up pump station. If not, then we're going to have to do kind of like we did the water tank, just take part out of the budget. And then rest of that come out of the capital or burden. Come to me, that's the most crucial item we've got right now, probably on this ship.
We are, um, working on replacing the reserve that we're going to lose for painting the two water tanks and now the Joe Louis repairs. Um, we have a company that we rent the North Main Street, uh, well for cellular service. We get currently thirty eight thousand dollars a year for that run on. It's gone up, uh, probably fifteen thousand dollars in the last five years. Uh, Verizon owns the rights to it, it used to belong to Altel. Verizon bought out Altel. We've had a company approach us about buying out that lease with the upfront cash payment. Now, the number that keeps getting mentioned to me is anywhere between four hundred fifty and five hundred thousand dollars. I have held off on purpose, getting serious with the fellow until we had this meeting tonight to talk about it. Um, if we did that, we could take that money and put it back in our reserve. And we put us in a pretty good spot. Uh, the thing that I'd like for y'all to think about, and I want to explain it pretty clearly, is if we lose that money, that's thirty eight thousand dollars a year, plus whatever's going to accrue in, in future years, that we'll lose each year is revenue. So long term, we lose that money. Now, the, from what I see is, I'd rather replenish our fund and do something right now. But if they're, if they're forward thinking, well, what about twenty years from now, nobody's going to care about that. Another thing is too, when technology keeps changing and those tower leases are no longer needed, somebody else is taking all the risk, will lose that revenue stream anyway. So I think it's a good thing to do. Um, if we can't work out a, uh, a, a deal with the company we're currently, uh, negotiating with, we're going to go to the company that painted our water tanks, which is also the same one that handles the leasing work for the cell tower, which is on top of the North Main Street tank well. And offer them, instead of paying the bill, we just let them keep all of the proceeds from the lease payments in exchange for paying both the tanks. Now, if, if it's confusing, I'd be glad to go over it again, but look, we, we've been hit with so many, it's been hit with so many different things that we have to do. This is the only way that we know of to replenish that fund and have it there in case we have something bad happen.
If Pine Street well is down right now, we're looking probably twenty five fifty thousand dollars for a prep of that well.
So the cost of paying those two tanks was two hundred and twenty six thousand, not a way?
No, it was, the first one was a hundred and sixty nine and the second was a big right two.
We go wait, just ask the question.
But he kind of opened up the.
That's not stop.
I'm sorry, but I, when we got to that point, I, how many years of lift are the lease?
Cause it ties back to what he said.
It's open ended. So it's just year by year, when you will?
Thirty eight thousand per year.
That's what we hear.
Right now, are we not going to assess that one issue?
Let's go on. Keep, keep going, keep going, go ahead.
So my question is, they want an upfront payment of four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars and had the lease for a perpetuity? So every ten years we'll get that, right now, assuming everything.
It doesn't go sound a lot, I don't know what it meant, but, uh, sale.
Cause you get the thirty eight thousand.
Yeah.
And when I started as manager, it was around twenty two thousand a year, so it's increased.
It's based on the usage, the cell usage through the power. They're getting ready to upgrade that.
But I'll come back.
They're going to upgrade that tower?
I'm sorry, I, I just want y'all to know, but, uh.
Write your questions down, the stack is over here writing all the questions down, what you want to add. You just go back to the line out. Just write the line out and decide.
Uh, going to uniforms, same fourteen. Chemicals is six thousand. Physicals is a hundred and stormwater hours, put a hundred and six thousand and seventy three, and I'll let him decline down.
Um, the reason that's such an odd number is we use, we use stormwater to balance out our, our water sewer fund. So if we have a surplus, you'll find it in stormwater. If we, you know, if we get low, you'll find it in stormwater. Also, this line item used to be around a hundred thousand dollars a year before we had the stormwater fee. Follow the rationale here. Since the stormwater fee is being used for the Southwest Arlington stormwater project, we're having to kick this back up to handle other stormwater needs. That's why that number is at one oh six oh seven three. So that gives us some flexibility of working stormwater in other parts of town. There's no payment due on the back truck until July of twenty nineteen. So that means there's no payment for this budget year for the back truck. So most of the money that's in here can be used for planning with the engineer, who we're planning on using, um, Urban Engineering, Bill Urban, who lives here, but has office in Florence, is working with, currently on the, uh, mapping out the West Broad Street stormwater issue where the rubber duck has been out.
Uh, two fifty seven, pipe fitting, state's same, four thousand. Vehicle insurance went to twenty two hundred. Employee training, state thousand. Professional services, stays at twenty seven. Sewer line repair, it was up to fifty seven, four ninety nine.
Talk about that a bit, please.
We had, as Ms. Reeves can vary from vouch, dropping during her front yard. We spent, we spent that much almost in pay this year, repairing. Not counting what the digging and all the other work. Probably forty fifty thousand, just paid for it. We'll probably, we'll probably push a hundred thousand dollars in sewer line repair this year. And it's, it's, you know, it's a crack, we don't know what it's going to do. You hope, pray it's a zero, but you got to have something when, when it follows in. And depending on how, how extensive it gets, like to lose a guy, where you got to go, and Syracuse, you got to go a whole block, it's expensive. But, you know, fortunately, so far, it's been where the guys have been able to do it. Took a little time, but they've been able to save thousands, save sixty thousand. I rent a piece of equipment doing this.
It worked. Both things.
And, uh, then two seventy nine, other operating expenses, so it's the same, same, seventy five hundred. The total then expenses before nine fourteen C is four sixty, six seventy two. And a capital, line three eighty, we got, I got twenty five thousand dollars in here, that's for a vehicle, a new truck. Machines and equipment, states at one hundred thousand. Miscellaneous equipment, twenty five hundred. Down at the bottom, line four hundred, SRF payback, that's the other long and small one. This is payment two of thirty, at sixteen thousand, eight hundred and eighteen thousand.
Thirty years. Thirty years? For what lines?
SRF, this department.
That was the maximum EDA by the sewer fund.
If we can get a good chance to do another buying consolidation, we'll probably throw, throw all this stuff in. Race going up now at some time soon. Then we got a total of, and that one is one forty four, three eighteen, with a total of seven eight six, five six four. Sewer collection, nine fourteen C. And on page sixty two, nine four T, this is the actual waste treatment plants. And they're getting salaries up to one point five. Rest of the stuff through the top, we're waiting on the figures from insurance. Drop down to line two twelve, again, we up to two twelve, twenty eight thousand. Rest of membership dues, state's same, auto expense in four, electricity saving sixty. Telephone three hundred, machine and equipment's thirty thousand, building repair, two thousand. Page sixty three, paint supply of a hundred. Uniforms, six hundred. Chemicals, sixty thousand. Two forty nine, medical supply, thousand. Physicals, a hundred and fifty. Vehicle insurance went up to two three, three two. Building insurance went up to twelve twenty five. Employee training on line two sixty four, stays at six hundred. Professional services, stays at forty five thousand. Permits at sixteen hundred dollars. Sewer bed repaired, hour up to fifty thousand. This is, eventually we'll have to do some work out on the one and seven sewer beds.
Explain what the beds are for now to use?
The beds, the one thing we have, we have seven beds, which is a sand bed. Give or take. The sewer water goes into this bed, drains down in it, it really just goes down to it, it works just like a septic. And it goes down about fifteen to sixteen feet deep in the ground, and then there's a set of pipes that collect it. And by the time it filters through the dirt, works its way into biodegrades. And it goes out and it'll go through a disinfectant chamber where it's treated with chlorine to make sure there's nothing left in, no bugs left in. And then it's, that, the chlorine's removed out of it and then it's discharged from the creek. These beds are actually what does the tree. And over years, the sand works its way out, some of them out through the drains and all that, and we're going to have to probably replace some surf, some sand and some, start at least in one bed or similar. It keeps capacity, if you lose capacity, the, the elevation of the dirt goes, then you lose the bed.
Something else that's concerned us over the years too, is it was built, the plant was built in nineteen eighty two. The useful life of those plants is usually forty to fifty years, if you're fortunate. So forty years is twenty twenty two.
And it's a great, runs efficient, real reasonable, a cheap operator, as long as DHEC don't come up with some kind of screen or ramp. This land may happen, and that's always possible.
But it's a filter.
Yeah, it's, it's a big filter, but working just like a septic tank, instead of going through sand, like a big sand filter. And if it goes down, it's biodegradates, it's settled down.
Anybody that would like a tour, it's not a bad idea to go out there and just eyeball it. It's quite impressive. Technology's very simple, but it works, it works for us.
We, we produce no sludge, most plants generate sludge that you've got to dispose of, pay to get rid of or something. Just makes no sludge, we take, we take a tractor and plow it up when it's dry.
Where is this?
Outside of your room.
Oh, okay.
You see the sign? But you know, anybody wants to go anytime, let me know, I'll take you out, take you around. And then other operating expenses, four thousand, stays the same. And a total of two ninety one, one oh seven. And a capital, machines and equipment's ten thousand, miscellaneous equipment stays at ten thousand. And that's it, with a total of twenty of that, a grand total of three fifty five, five twenty. The sewer, this is not what we take away from the water.
Anybody got quick, put on page fifty four, front page.
I'm sorry, page, what page? Page fifty four, first thing.
Page first thing, fifty one. I've, I've, after going through the question I did have about the salary and then they.
You got page question, page fifty four?
I was explaining, yes, I had a question, page fifty four, what was about the salaries and the number of employees. But after reading one oh one, her, for each, every, for each budget, I was able to figure it out.
Yeah, what she's saying is the employees are listed for that department as the, the budget detail of fifty six.
So now I was able to figure it up, the even one, each, each, ever going. But I did, I know we always say contract O and M, I, what is that?
That is what Davidson Brown, they are furnishing. That is what Davidson Brown, they are furnishing licensed operators for the wells, water, and the wastewater.
And, but I see that in each one?
That's each one, you got them in well, they got them, we pay them for the water, wastewater, we pay them all three budgets.
Okay.
They're doing, they're doing all the licensed operation.
This question comes up a lot, um, why don't we have people that have those qualifications or licenses?
Um, the average age of a licensed operator, South Carolina is fifty-nine years. Nobody's getting into this. Uh, to do it, Florence just up there pay, start and pay at twenty-four hours a mile. That's a start, he's got a year to make, get his certifications, and if denied, they terminate at the end of the year. But at that point, they go on up, and what you gonna get into, the only way to get one is to buy one. You have to buy the operator, that's the reason we opened in Davidson Brown, saying they have enough there, got salaries, people's salaries to keep them employed. Without so far, no, no, or no other.
And they're doing what now, exactly what?
They actually operate the water, treating the water, and the water in the well, and then in the waste treatment plant, they run all the tests, they do everything related to the waste treatment.
They test the water for whatever factors?
They do that, they run the filter, backwash it, they check the operation, they have all the kind of logs, then they have to do the D H tests and stuff. If you have a problem at night after hours, you're on call, they come with all them, they come, it's on a remote, it's called their phone, they get an alert on their phone if a well takes down or whatever.
Okay, so this, okay, that sounds good.
What type of license does that require?
The wells require a C course, and wastewater requires a B biological waste treatment.
Let me ask you a question. Um, once upon a time, we had Harge, Harge out there?
Mitch Harge.
Mitch Harge, and he was testing. So what's the difference in what he did then and what Davidson Brown do now?
They're doing the same thing, lab certification got so critical, the cost of maintenance, because D H has to come in and certify, recertify you. And also, if you do your own testing, you always got that question, did they pencil it? Did they have legitimate test? Was the answer really correct by using a third party to test it? The city of Darlington has, you know, we don't have anything in it, I mean, D H's not gonna question it because we didn't write it down. So you're using a third party to, to create the data for D H?
Before you came on board, before Davidson Brown came on board, we were constantly getting recommended by D H.
Davidson Brown's been operating over eight years now, we have not failed an inspection, that's it.
So how many?
We were constantly failing before.
So how many Davidson Brown employees we have?
There's usually two here, two here, but now on the weekend, they usually cover about one night. This is working seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, if they have somebody. It's, we don't, we don't have to worry about.
Are you holding any?
Paying any of these.
Little wood gardeners, please, or something, because they just about to have a shift.
Yeah, with this, with the Davidson Brown, this is, they're furnishing their vehicles, I mean, Davidson Brown furnishes the vehicle, they furnish all the benefits and insurance, all we made is this. So we have no liability to Davidson Brown as far as operators. And they got enough, they've got like twelve, fourteen on staff, so they've got one out, they, and they rotate weekends, they'll, like, two of the guys work for Florence during the weekend, they'll come in and volunteer work one out of four weekends. For the extra money to make overtime.
So that's how?
Who would hire them ourselves, hire all the different, um, certification we say we need? What's our cost difference?
Well, you're gonna, you're gonna, you probably to keep one, you're gonna pay forty to fifty thousand dollars a year, then you gotta furnish them the vehicle, you know, which you gotta cover the benefit. And you gotta have, people minimum really need more. Because nobody's gonna work three hundred and sixty-five days a week, a year, or any physical. And you come here seven days a week, one's out sick, really need to leave three.
We got the lab costs.
Yes, to do the full example, well, so the lab, actual physical lab cost and then two sixty-five.
So, so what I'm looking at here?
The chemical.
It's like over two hundred thousand every day in a year, but they are providing all of those things.
They're providing all, and you figured out, the day one rate and fighting the keep operators, this is the big one.
Okay.
Uh, more and more people are going to it, they've got more, get more and more business, they had, they taken over fiber, what, well, at the start of there, they have, totally taken that over the operation until. Because they don't wanna try to hire fighting, a lot of their people left when they closed the plant, they're either with Florence or retired. It's really becoming a, a bad situation because, like I say, you start to pay, you know, twelve, fifteen dollars a mile, and that's attraction for somebody to go to school, take three, four exams. And make that kind of money in the hot sun, maybe get sewer on, whatever, versus you go to Walmart, Walmart starts at eleven dollars a mile, and you work in air conditioning with good benefits.
Sure looks good, Mark, you talked about this, this place you know, you have to spend.
It's critical, you know, well, we don't, nobody, you know, it might run for years, but, concern is, I, I will tell everybody in that night, it looks like a Zach's facility, a Sonic, is coming to the truck supplier. Trying to Zach's be down on Sonic, locating, oh, oh, outside, or in that area between the truck and supply. That's more sewer, or restaurants run a lot of water, clean, washing, all that's gonna go in the jellies. Everything out there goes to the jellies.
So we got, they have another pump there for the business?
Well, it needs, it needs to be bigger, it needs to be rebuilt.
Would it be that same spot?
Yeah, or adjacent to it, right, in, in the rightness.
How old is that pump station?
Probably thirty years.
That's, is that the end of the issue?
Yeah, it's, it's, I mean, like I say, we patch control, the control is eat up, you know, it's a, it's, it's corroded, you know, this, the atmosphere of sewers corrosive. Well, it eats concrete up, so I'm sure the inside of the concrete structure's eaten up. Frankie and I had to replace two pieces of pipe in a year, a few months ago, to get it back in operation. And the only way we were able to do that, solar septic tank service, stayed here with a Fleeter truck overnight, and pumped it and held it to the waste treatment. Cost me fifty-five hundred dollars for that, oh, and that was a bargain, called Ronnie Putnam, he said, I can't charge you what I should charge you.
Now Freddie, if we can't justify a re-gram based on the economic development, because that pump station supports the L M I area, we could probably qualify for a C D B G, if that's something we want to do.
If we get enough interest, a lot of it crawled out of the main street. Up to about, Bay Island comes from Maine, he comes back.
We can qualify, but that's just another option.
Well, the, um, Miss Lathan knows the C D B G rates better than I do, whichever, well, it might be, we can put in for both.
We can, because with, um, with Ria, you, you're estimating the cost, it's gonna cost about four of a million dollars here, right, Freddie? But you got a brand spanking here, fully compliant, but with Ria, we can get up, they changed it from three hundred and fifty thousand, to up to half a million, that, so there might be some other infrastructure.
Well, what we do is also, if the old treatment plant, the actual main pump station, the old treatment plant, is upping the pumps to larger, energy efficient pumps, and also basing on the capacity, because we gotta say, we can't say we rebuild it, we gotta say we increase the capacity.
Well, you can't say increase capacity, but you're right, you can't say.
We're not rebuilding, yeah, we're not repairing.
Yeah, so, so you're right, you got, we have to just be trick.
We gotta justify, we need a large.
But we can do it.
Don't we have to issue growth bill also?
Yeah, and that's what I say, that we try to get, if we could go for the five hundred thousand and use it for some of the pumps, so, it doesn't.
The good thing is, the city's match is ten percent, so on the half a million, you get off fifty thousand or so.
So should we be looking at repairing or replacing?
Well, we replace and, to replace, yeah, we, we can't say we're repairing, because, not for a brand anyway, we got, we got a rebuild of large.
I understand that, but I'm just saying.
Well, if it goes down, if it goes down, we have to.
You're better off replacing, being...
If y'all give us the guidance, we'll go ahead and do the work from the C D B G and wouldn't submit that.
What's C D B G going, what's September, doesn't it?
Ria September, both of September.
One thing, you wanna do what you need to do now, because those businesses come, and we not the path foot, that's gonna pull them back.
To me, it's gonna be devastating.
It is.
I mean, everybody saw the press that Florence got when they didn't have water for two days.
Right.
We don't, we don't want that on the TV, that we had to show it all our humane industry, or not industry, all our U businesses now, because of sewer, pump station failure.
That would reflect on any new development company, we get that blackout back, and they go, thank you.
That's what I'm saying.
This is our growth area, we know it, we've gotta do well.
Growth bill, we have to replace that pump station.
It needs work now, too.
How old is that Freddie?
Probably in the eighties, I think it was switched over when the treatment plant went out.
Yep, yep, it was switched over, uh, you could.
Quit the old plant, that was what, eighty-two?
I think it was eighty-two, but they, they had to upgrade it in eighty-nine after you go, so that was the last major work that was done there, I believe, so that's twenty-eight year, twenty-nine years? That was the old, that was the old treatment plant.
How much does it cost us to take a chance on getting whatever re-grams that we can get? Filling out the application and that kind of stuff, what is it good? How much is it, how much is it gonna cost to put together packages that need to go, see if we can get it out of there?
The application itself, my fee is three thousand dollars to submit the application itself. And coupled with that, we're gonna have to have a preliminary engineering report. Depending on who the engineer is, I've had one engineer, he worked with me and didn't charge much of anything. And the other engineering costs, preliminary engineering report, could range in, oil from seven, eight, I've seen how much inbound with all of that. That's what an application says.
They've done our worst. Excuse me, what is your word? Pork rye. I gotta get you one.
So we're looking at fifteen to twenty years of possibility.
Twenty would be way too high, I live in contract with an engineering firm.
So would you say fifteen or twenty, twenty what?
Engineer, hook up wide.
To file the application.
Fifteen thousand dollars, submit the application, because of the engineering work and the development of programs for Jamie to do her thing.
Well, you're saying fifteen thousand?
I'm saying my fee to pull the whole application together, work with an engineer, and make sure the engineer, preliminary engineering report is tight and responsive, and pull all that together, my fee is only three thousand dollars. The engineer, I've worked with engineers who literally charge, literally almost nothing, but I've seen the engineering fees range from anywhere from seven up to ten thousand dollars, ten thousand is on the high side. It's on that very high side, you should be paying about ten, thirteen thousand.
It's not a major engineering project, but I'm sure that, you don't know right here, size of this room.
If y'all want that, we'll stick, we'll slap that on the agenda, go ahead and prove, get to put that in a picture.
Well, I think we should, we should, I think you were saying we could do, we could apply for two different grants, right?
Well, with the approval, then what I would do is come and work with the senior manager, work with Freddie, and figure out what's the most optimum application to submit. Because like Freddie was saying, some of the, some of the agencies are gonna have certain requirements, so we'll look at, should we go Ria or should we go C D B G? Should we go for one pump station, and are we gonna need to improve some of the underground sewer? And do we have forced mains, and do we wanna upgrade those forced mains to gravity fed lines? Because the life expectancy then, you know, it's almost like twenty times, so anytime you can get rid of the forced main and put in a gravity line, you wanna do that. So we'll look at all those types of options, and then, you know, you'll make, you'll bring that back to you, or Howard and Freddie will make a decision in terms of what's the optimum type of application package to submit. And which is the best agency to submit based on the time. For Ria, like Freddie was saying, in the fall, you're looking at economic development, but you gotta partner with a business, and that business has to sign a contract, really with the rural infrastructure authority, to say, I guarantee, for the next five years, I'm gonna bring in, if you get a half a million dollars, right? Would they have to commit to fifty jobs, fifty new jobs, over that period of time, so you actually have to partner with the industry. Who's gonna commit to certain things in terms of economic growth and development. But there are other types of ways we can, we can get that in without having to have that commitment necessarily, so.
Can we, can we apply for both of the grants?
It's a possibility, it's how small, that we could do this, just depending on what they would do.
Then we'd be looking at twenty thousand, more or less, twenty twenty-five.
Engineer, you would do, you would do engineering, we would have to do one engineer, we'd need to do applications.
Two applications, so we could talk.
I'd be about fifteen, fifteen still.
I think we need to look at both things, see if we can get to.
I've got this pump station on the same page as fifty-nine, I'm on fifty-nine.
Yeah, I, you, y'all got fifty-five here, y'all skipping.
I think you skipped.
I think you did.
Well, does anybody have any other?
I want to ask on, um, page fifty-five, um, two sixty-four, employee's training, how many employees went to training last year, and how much of that thirty-five hundred dollars go?
Uh, Shonda went, William went last year. They, the guys, you know, rotate, Frankie sent us, part of them went here and part of them, just so we can keep the city covered. And a lot depends on who, Frankie didn't wanna go last year.
Frankie didn't wanna go, okay.
So he let, he sent William in his place.
That's on that page, right, we're, we're next.
Wait, you said something about Pine Street, Pine Street where, just down right there? About those, uh, antennas and stuff on the tanks, it would be possible, if we sold the North Main Street, we could have an option, a way to develop in that same business on those other tanks.
It's, it's listed now, they have, the same company has a sign on it, they keep brokers, you know, so far, nobody's expressed interest in that. That one thing, the elevation's a little higher than on North Main.
What I was getting at is, if we sell off the North Main, do we still have an option to?
Yes.
Keep that other, we can develop that business on our own.
We also. If we sell it off, we're making a non-competition agreement offer.
Please tell me what you're talking about.
Kevin would. If you were to sell, if you were to sell the lease rights, wouldn't you want a non-competition agreement?
Okay, what are we talking about?
Selling the cell tower, my son, if I was going to buy the rights to transmit off that cell tower, I would.
Are we just talking advertisement on the top?
No, this is actually.
Okay, well, tell me something.
The city sells, thanks to cell network. The city, antenna to your cell.
Antenna.
So if, if I'm paying you five hundred thousand dollars, I'm going on a non-competition agreement to keep the city from going back out, competing with me, so I don't know whether we can double broker.
Okay, but before you get to this deep kind of detail, I wanna get to this, we got the signal, the, the antenna.
We got a water tower, and we lease space in that water tower to an antenna company, and the antenna company pays us thirty-eight thousand dollars a year.
To do that?
To do that.
To be able to, to be on you. Their antenna, on there.
Verizon pays to put their antenna on top of that.
Okay, I got that.
And then the question is, do we want to sell out forever for five hundred thousand dollars?
To Verizon.
To Verizon, for instance.
Uh, open it up, y'all.
Yeah, but we're getting thirty-eight thousand right now, every year, so every ten or eleven years.
But we don't have a contract, we have a one-year renewable contract, so we don't know after one year whether they would come back to us and say, we would like to do this again, a second year, a third year, a fourth year. And what Howard's talking about is there's a possibility of technology changing, so that instead of bouncing off of that cell tower, they're bouncing off of satellites or something else, to, to get that same kind of coverage, and then we would no longer be able, we wouldn't have something worth leasing anymore.
Have, had, had there been any other companies showing interest? Have, had, had there been any other companies showing interest?
We got one that.
Another company that called us about buying out the lease.
Okay.
The number they quoted us was upfront payment four hundred fifty to five hundred thousand dollars right now.
But nothing after that?
Correct.
So we might get, they say four fifty to five, which means they might pay six.
Oh, so they got to be specific.
Well, we sent, we've sent them the contract and everything related to the current deal that we have. They did their revenue projections and they were comfortable just making like a verbal offer between four fifty and five hundred. But I've been putting them off just to have a meeting with them and not to tell you what's going on before we got any more involved in the negotiation.
Didn't they just upgrade the antennas and so much?
They're working on it.
They're working on it right now.
They're running the fiber. When we got all the issue with them running fiber, the historical and everything. Is they gonna put, you know, upgrade five G and their place coming, so they gonna.
To that tower.
Upgrade that tower.
So if they're investing hundreds of thousands of dollars into this tower, I don't think we have a worry of them leaving in the next couple of years.
Maybe probably not in the next couple. I'm just wondering in ten years, what's, what it's done since I started practicing law. And with what, since Kevin started practicing law, I just don't know what technology can do. I think you're right. We've got probably two, three, four years. We wouldn't have to worry about it. But I'm just not smart enough to know what's gonna come after that.
Is that the way you see?
But I think that if they're talking at this point, four fifty to five, there's some room in there to give some more money out of, how much I don't.
And to me, when somebody has, you know, have been so supportive.
Before we go on to something else.
These years, make it look pretty good. I like Verizon.
We need to finish with, before we branch on to something else. We getting off.
All right, page fifty-nine, section two fifty-five. We have the increase for the stormwater.
Anybody got a question on fifty-six? Any questions on fifty-six? Anything on fifty-seven? Okay, now fifty, fifty-eight? Nine fifty-nine?
All right, line item two fifty-five, stormwater. I thought when we created the stormwater fee, we did this to get this line item out of this budget. Why's it back in?
I think I went over that a little bit earlier.
You kinda did. I'm just curious, but from a budget standpoint, a legality standpoint, we created the fund to get out of here.
Well, with the funds they use to pay for one project now and we have stormwater needs over the rest of the town, I don't know of any other way to do it unless you wanna raise the stormwater fee itself to generate more income.
No, I just thought we were getting it out of this fund, so I would assume it would have its own budget.
But the entire fee is just going for the payment for the project, so you can't really have, there's no.
There's no cushion, no nothing.
There's no budget. And so what we've, what we've tried to do is to blunt the impact to the water sewer fund and the general reserve fund by, or general fund, by putting one position in, in water sewer and one position is in the general fund. And the payment will be split when it's due July twenty nineteen the same way. It won't, the impact just won't be on this department or on the general fund completely. And as we talked about earlier, this piece of equipment, the jackback equipment, will be used by the water sewer department also, because they have needs for.
Well, that's why we get ready, where the truck coming from? How are we paying out of that, out in that?
The, the truck is not in this budget because it's not delivered until July twenty eighteen. First payment will be due till July twenty nineteen. It's forty-four thousand dollars a year for ten years. The cost is three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars.
It would be in the first year, no.
It will come from this time next year.
Okay. In whatever. I'm just saying.
Half of my budget, half of mine.
So we'll be dealing with it in here.
Definitely, half of it in here, half of it.
That's fine.
Line item two seventy-eight?
But don't get off the stormwater. What kinda revenue is our stormwater fees generating?
Hundred thirty-three thousand dollars a year.
But it doesn't matter. I mean, it's all being spent.
Right, it's all going towards the payback.
Oh, it's going to Chairman Street.
Uh, for, for that project. Plus the, um, sundy alcohol, so, oh. I'm gonna save that news for the lineup.
Line item two seventy-eight, sewer line repair, fifteen thousand dollar increase. Does that HVAC rental cost?
Two seventy-eight?
Two seventy-eight.
We just, we just up.
Just up, okay.
We've flagged that. A lot of times that's the balance.
Anything on sixty? Well, I, I got a question for three eighty. Just get on page fifty-nine. The new truck. Are we purchasing a new truck or what new truck are we referring to?
The back truck. Three, that's a new pickup, just a pickup.
You usually get one truck a year?
I try to buy one a year to keep, I'm one short now.
You did, you just ordered a new one?
William blew it out of treatment plant, so we trying to get a replacement.
Trying to give me a tire.
Okay, page, page sixty. Any question on page sixty? Any question on page sixty? You just, you looked at fifty-nine. Okay, let's go to sixty-two.
You said, you said that the waste treatment plants nearing its life expectancy, we have one of them, eight, ten years.
We're lucky we'll have ten years, fifteen years out of it. What it's going to, I mean, we got growth, while it depends on the growth. It depends on how much growth we have. Our restaurant, we're not, we're not increasing large percentages a year. And as long as we don't, they heck, come up with any new parameters that we can't, or that we have to modify to make. If we keep doing the repair work on it, it may go on indefinitely, but I mean, until it reaches capacity.
What bed is the worst?
Four is having some problems. Three has got a clay buildup in it. One of they probably, four was the last one. Probably be three, bed three, we probably.
How many beds we have?
That really, really eight. One of them split in half, but I don't know why they made it that way when it starts. Number one is an A and a B, so it's really eight. Six big ones, six larger ones, and one that's got too small.
Eighty-two acres out there that were purchased from Harold Timmons in nineteen eighty-one. Probably twenty-five of the acres is usable, the rest is just.
Drop off.
Are we still shipping sewers to Florence?
Nothing, nothing going to Florence because of the oil mill down. There's nothing to go to Florence.
So we've got that.
We've got.
We got the options available if it's there and we will do it one day.
We have large growth in industry, want to locate on the bypass, then we've got that capacity on the bypass.
But the problem when we get out of the sewer business is that we don't control our own fate anymore. Somebody else does and they'll charge whatever they want. So we'll, we'll keep that plant as long as we can. And if it's still there in twenty thirty, we'll, we'll run it till we can't run it anymore.
Even if you get to one, you can't put the ninety percent out here. We're saying ten percent of the farm. Still will, still operate that way.
We will have the option too of anything that, if I can get a new industry and it's something that causes a problem from a, a chemical standpoint that we can't handle on our plant, that goes to Florence.
That's another thing, John, for us to keep our eye on and keep a close analysis on, on that in terms of what's our O M M cost versus what's a new plant? Plus what's new technology that's available to bring that on? Because that's also considered infrastructure, so we can get grant funding. And RIA, because Barney really likes to team with CDBG. She doesn't like to team someone with world development, but that's also another funding option. But I think it's wise to do exactly what you're doing and like, keep a close eye on that because that, that facility is old and the technology, quite frankly, although it's working well, is very old technology.
And the cost for a new treatment plant is what? Seven million bucks? Where are we gonna get that from? So, you know, eventually we'll be out of the sewer business one day. Let's just hope it's not any time soon. And we'll keep that money as long as we can.
Sixty-three? I checked this it through all of the professional services. What's that?
Sixty-five? That is any kinda engineering or lab work.
So that's not under Davidson Brown?
It could be Jamie, it could be Urban, any engineering service or any professional service that we have to pay them. Any consulting service, also all the lab, any lab system, we don't come out as professional service.
Is it pretty close to this or?
That lower than that. Without the grants, we haven't done, we haven't done much engineering this year because due to, we quit doing water grants. We're trying to recover from too many grants, right?
Anything else on sixty-three, sixty-four? Not, not that top, okay. That's it. Any other questions? Everybody already asked all the questions?
Water, water sewer capital improvement plan, I think that's what Freddie wants to get.
Yeah, it was, ass leading around and I'll give you the idea of some of the things that are on the drawing board that we gonna eventually have to address. There's a lot of them we've already talked about.
Freddie got more?
You just explaining what we.
Yeah, this is like I said, why don't we do, we, we hit a little bit on number one, Grove Hill, the main, main, that's the old treatment plant. That's Mayor Heinz thought of. That was repaired here a couple of years ago. And we spent a bunch of money because we had to, again, bring it out of North Carolina, put a pump and stay on the bypass pump for six, seven, twenty-something dollars, about rent the pump.
Everybody know where Grove Hill is?
It's in the downhill in the back of the cemetery. You gotta go through the cemetery, yeah. You guys don't love to go out there at night.
But you don't know who else behind that. They might be some live folks.
Steve feeling a bit of the way this week.
And live animals.
But that, that's we showing, we, you know, we got some old, old pumps that, main pump. The pumps have been, they were back there before we built the new treatment plant, so. These pumps, now they've been rebuilt, some of them replaced, but they're antique. And one day we'd like to replace them with some new lar, if we did this grant, some new larger pumps and also energy efficient pumps that will save a lot of electricity. Waste treatment plant we talked about, number two, working on a bed. Joe Lewis Pump Station is the one we've already been on. Allen Street Pump Station, there against reaching the one of the fallen farm. Five, that's the country club, the back of the sewer, the promise, Mr. Sager's dad, the promise sewer thirty-some years ago. What is Sammerson? I've never heard that name. What is that, street or part of?
Indian name, all, all those streets.
Well, I know, but I've never, I've never seen Sammerson name out there.
It's simply the sub division.
And then the other, the next page, the button, that's the item, the, is, it's number one, everybody knows that everything's getting over. It's just like me and everybody in the stream and everything out there is getting over. Like I said, sewer plant was built in eighty-two. The US, the US well was built, put in in nineteen eighty-seven. And then we've got two things we're talking, bring up is SCDAT requirements was quick to catch. And the bottom line is aging workforce all around the industry.
That's something we'll have to address with our staff just because most of our staff has been with that department twenty, twenty-five years or more. They are all in the tooth and not much share on top. Most of them, while they're physically able, they are breaking down physically, mentally able, sorry. There's some, some cases they're not physically able on.
Yeah, I mean, it's getting, I mean, it's like a sleeping away tonight is pounding, I found that. We're having a double teaming now, you know, like we had one drive a while back, strained to pull a muscle in that back, so. It's, it's learning they're having to do teamwork.
And there's no good answer for that either. Small bags.
How long do you allow them to stay on the light duty?
Guess it depends on what the doctor says.
Guess it depends on, you know, the release, Larry Brunson came back last week, releases all the restrictions, twenty pounds. He can't lift, he can't be doing anything, he can't lift over twenty pounds.
What about the other one that had the back problem? What's his name?
We talking, talking about laboring?
No, not we.
Going straight to park? Roofers or?
Roofers, I believe.
Probably shouldn't be talking specifically about civic employees and it's being taken.
Okay, go ahead on, what's, what the next one?
It's, uh, the dead, and the US fifty-two bypass tank is, what we, as we're gonna eventually, as we grow in the bypass area, we're gonna be approached at beating another war, an elevated war. Especially if it's a hotel, any, any large group development out there, somewhere we're gonna eventually gonna have to look at another. Ground or some, some way to put a, say, new war, another, a third war.
You know the area by Wyman Street out there, um, some of the left, one of the farms? About thirty acres back there that's owned by a family. They're, they're willing to turn, they want to turn that into residential. What?
The James family?
No. So that's something that may be on the table the next few years.
That's right there wherever these are coming.
Yes, and, and we're contiguous with part of that property.
That's my city name, that, that's my city name.
Well, in the back of it is, on the backside over there, behind, um, where the diocese places it, and all that track, it, it, it goes up against it. So we get that in and then we're at Wyman Street. And thirty acres, there's no telling how many houses you put up there. I tell you, our best years are ahead of us. Yeah, yeah, behind that, right there, yeah. It's, it's just, it's divided roughly by a small, uh, brick of water, that's all.
I know exactly what you're talking about. Because, you know, Joyce, no step into me. Nobody don't wanna, I mean, we can get them in, uh, doing what?
Are you talking about Sunrise Acres?
Well, that's duty, no, right behind of Camper, on, on.
Well, that, that's.
McKeever.
That's part of what we're looking at. We'd like to get Camper in, but Camper would only come in.
See that?
Right.
We will do, we will do an economic development.
I don't know. I have to ask.
Cause the older reason I was bringing down a fire, a family member.
What y'all, Mr. Kissup?
Water sewer rates. Council last year voted to do a three percent rate increase. Everybody have cups? They, they coming around. And just what, this is, this is the rate sheet and also on the second page, there's a comparison sheet to adjacent county ordinance sewer and some of the local communities are pounding around. What is, the work base for the bill will go up fifty-four cents. So it's not an astronomical jump.
You have estimated revenue generated?
About fifty.
Do we need to leave it where it's at?
Well, we're surviving. Well, we're surviving, we're not gaining any, but we're, we're still in the bottom, definitely in the bottom half of the rates around us.
You look at the rates on the second page.
Same page, you can see the comparison though. Most of these, I show hours or so, Donovan County ordinance store, the last I heard, they going up at least five percent. So these, these are not factored in, any rate increases coming in, I mean, it's currently the new budgets are not in the comparison.
With this tariff, I know you can't compete with Florence.
No.
We can't, I can't compete with Florence, yeah.
Well, really, on water, we compete with Florence, it's just the sewer.
If we're going by this rate, 'cause that first column is, is what's happening now?
Yeah.
And what you propose is in the second column?
No, the same sewer, the same.
Sewer is separate.
The only one that's got the most one is ours at the top.
I guess, I guess.
Timbers don't have water, no.
Water sewer.
Florence has got it all.
I guess my question is, projection wise.
We're not gonna get rich by no means.
Talking about Florida, could need to increase it.
Probably.
Yo, let's listen, let's listen.
If we based anything, I'd go back to back ones if you remember Wayne Chapman when he was on county. He pushed until we found the guy to the capital fee. It's raise that capital fee that goes into the capital reserve that would help replace borderline wells, whatever you needed. Just look somewhere in the future up in that, above the two dollars, it's been two dollars since we implemented it, whenever that was, I don't have any years, you have to look back at the years up there. Rather than doing the basic rate, if put it that way, would be designated to, to a capital project. To bill, to bill a bench account.
But the rates that we're charging now, is that gonna reflect in his grants and things that we're applying for?
Yeah, they will look at them, you know, and that's hopefully the revenue so far is met requirement, sooner or later, you know, that's where, I know Lamar was bringing up rates. Is that if you get, if your revenue gets too low, then Ria or whoever's gonna dictate, you've gotta do a rate increase if you want to maintain eligibility for grants.
We need to stay ahead of that.
Yeah, we don't wanna get to where we can't qualify for a grant. Cause they have several, several located, Lamar was one of them, something like Johnsonville somewhere, but anyway, they had to do twelve, fifteen percent rate increases to get above that.
So they could just.
Yeah, I'd rather do three, four percent of the time, you know, and do it over. We had to do right before I came here was twenty, twenty-five percent. And that's the point, that's the point that he got to this point, they couldn't do that. And they were, they were more or less mandated to do the twenty-five percent rate.
What, what the agencies would do is they'll compare the rates throughout the state of South Carolina.
Yeah, this, this rate, real, I get this off real website, they put, every year after July, when the budgets come out, is real, send all of us a questionnaire, give us your, your rates. Or if you haven't had an increase check, just same as it was, and base it on what, five, get five thousand gallons of water will cost and what five thousand gallons of sewer cost. And they get that from everybody, but every municipality has to participate and any nonprofits that will or special districts, a lot of them don't, I know Chesterfield Rural Water, that published theirs, some of the other ones that are astronomically high will publish. Just out of your Chesterfield Rural Water base waters, just four waters fifty-five dollars.
So you have to submit the rate as part of the application itself? And the last couple of years, the rates have been fine? They won't deny approval of a grant, or what they may do is make conditional if your rates they consider are significantly low. Because what they're looking for is sustainability. Are you having enough revenue coming in to maintain this half being all infrastructure improvements? So I don't think, think it's gonna be a major problem.
Quick, quick story, when we did that huge rate increase, next year we had this gentleman from, from the City of Columbia Water, so we came down here, ran a seminar for us and then he blasted us because he said, that's unheard of, you should never raise your rates that high. Next year, I think City of Columbia bankrupted, cause they wanted to keep that. We still operate. Columbia borrows heavily from their water sewer department for the general fund, like forty million dollars over like eight years. We stopped doing, we stopped borrowing from the water sewer fund and not paying it back in twenty-eleven, we haven't done that since.
Oh, that's two dollars that goes into the capital account, we had money if we got into capital account now.
David, a little over six hundred thousand, I got figures from Gloria a few weeks ago, when we paid the water tank, it'll come out of that, that's a hundred and sixty, close to a hundred and seventy from North Main, and then we'll have about two that'll come out for Pine Street, so. It would be down three fifty or so.
And we're gonna consolidate one account that we had the EDA bypass sewer grant projects, a hundred eight thousand, and that account, we'll put that back in his reserve, so we'll be looking between three fifty to four hundred. We collect probably eighty thousand dollars a year?
Yes, about seven thousand or so, seven, seventy-five hundred when that gets into it.
Should we, if we're looking at this three percent increase in a general rates, should we look at increasing at two dollars, about twenty-five cents, fifty cents or something like that to the tribe? Because I look at items one through on this handout, it scares me. And so I think we have got to start building towards having more money on hand when these things break down that we know we're gonna break down.
We were like one point two million and storm comes to fifteen, Matthew came through and then the EDA project, it'd be all this grant work and without, we don't have.
I'm sorry, I can't hear.
Two years.
Twenty-five cent wouldn't be bad to start off with, and then go up another twenty-five cent next year, so we can get some of these things done because, with everything collapsing, 'cause I think I had a sewer collapse back behind my house till today. A sewer collapsed, and I'm just thinking it collapsed back behind my house, is it going further than others collapsed on?
What we, as you can see from Syracuse and Tallulah lately, is we end up going basically a manhole or a block.
Right.
This is about four hundred feet.
That's what I'm saying.
It's because the pipe, you go, you dig, 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 and there's no good pipe. On Tallulah, when Frankie got about two-thirds down, I said Frankie, you better quit looking for pipes, pipes cheap, go ahead, that would have digged an itch and putting you back.
Do you have a log of all that on your computer where you can, if I came and asked you how many lines have been placed on every avenue to new street, can you tell me by going on the computer?
No, they're not logged, no matter, have to dig.
Have to dig?
Oh, man, I have, not dig, not literally dig, I have to work on it to get it up.
So where do you document that kind of stuff?
A lot of it is work order, stuff like paying, industrial payment to pay.
So we don't, we're not maintaining a paper trail on the, on computer system?
Of course we have a paper trail, just a paper trail.
No, I'm saying on the computer, or we not maintaining the paper trail?
The work order is not on, work order system.
I think the question that keeps coming up here, correct me if I'm wrong, we don't have anything, not just that you, we could show you, but mapped out, this what's been replaced and what's not.
Yeah, like that.
I can get it, it's not probably, it's not like on a spreadsheet that I could pull it up and just give me the repair.
We should generate, don't we should generate some kind of spreadsheet so that way if, if a question comes up, what was replaced last year or how many was replaced, and we don't have to dig in.
We have to dig, we don't need to be digging sometimes.
I mean, that could be easy.
I'm sure, I'm sure the DNV could, has that, has that information, it's just a matter of requesting in the public forum.
It'd be easier than you, you just gonna hit, hit the button, go to Excel and pop up.
It might be also that we are going to have to look at our computer system. We've, I'm not so sure that we've gotten the most of the night computer system, so sometimes we may not have a button you can push.
Well, he just, he just confirmed, we don't have updated, we don't have Google Doc, we ain't got updated.
Okay.
We got Windows eight, come on.
We had some, I've had systems box.
Well, let me tell you how old mine is.
You can Google Doc, I'll set it the whole.
But I could tell you, what, what I'm looking at, like you doing, whatever these work orders are, that they should be compiled somewhere. Whether you're writing it in something, so that you would be able to get back to that, that's, I don't care how you do it, but whatever these work orders should not just be a stack, but be somewhere where you can tell, that's what I'm, that's what I'm asking.
And I could compile, a lot of them would be on my monthly reports. And it would be a matter of going back and, and getting, they're not on like Carolyn said, they're not on my Excel spreadsheet or any kind of spreadsheet.
But if you got any computer system, and mine is so old, I still gotta XP, I got XP, so you know good and well, and I could do, I got the Excel spreadsheet.
They got a capital fund there, if we raised it fifty cents, that's only six dollars.
Right.
If you raised it a dollar, it's only twelve dollars. I'm not one for raising taxes. If we raised it a dollar, it would be another forty thousand dollars a year, be a hundred and twenty thousand a year we'd be expecting in. And we had to let that fund sit, we started collecting that in oh-six or oh-seven, and we finally got to a million dollars in twenty thirteen. So it takes a while to build it up. We, we have really knocked that thing down with all these different grant products we worked on the last eight, nine, ten years.
Well, like you say, that would be cheaper on the, on the residence if we did that, not just raising any of those percentages on the water. And like you say, that would be generating funds to go to a specific.
But then again, RIA and CDBG doesn't look at the capital fund, looks at your rates.
So we probably need to do both.
Yeah, we've maintained those rates at three percent a year.
We do the rates at three percent, put the dollar on the capital.
The rate that they tell it does include capital, but when I do the report, they, they say add cap, you know, when you calculate, you base, you add me in and you base per five thousand, if you got a capital fee.
Miss Lathan, you wanna say something?
Yeah, one of my observations in going through the budget, I didn't see anything for IT, for information technology upgrades.
I can, I can address that. We are not satisfied with the current IT provider.
No, I'm, I'm not talking about emails and stuff like that, I'm talking about for your operations for your O and M. Cause as we're doing projects now, we're getting ass-built drawings. So we now, we now have the ability, we're getting ass-built, and one of the things that Howard, you know, made sure we did was, we get a set of ass-built drawings, so everything that goes underground, all the infrastructure in the city of Dolton now. The engineer is required to get the construction contract, to get certified ass-built drawings, and they come back to us. So we now will know where every piece of underground piping, whether it's mortar, sewer, stone mortar, the elevations, the locations of the manholes, all. We need to be able to digitize that to, to make up, and because if we start building that now, a lot of the problems that Freddie and his staff are having when they go out to locate things, all of that should be computerized. So if you guys could consider allocating some funding in your budget to start building that database. Now rural infrastructure, and this is a problem that I learned, almost all of my clients in rural South Carolina have this same challenge. Their systems are old, but they haven't had the technology or the staff to keep up and to build that IT, and they go out, water is wasted, all kinds of problems while they're looking for bags. It's just a horrendous O and M problem. But as we're putting our infrastructure in now, we should do it, and, and I think Davidson Brown should have a lot of.
Everything, everything. And they have gone back, put a lot of over on digital.
So the, the city really should, should have that, so I think that's something you guys.
You're saying we need to have a repository on site?
Most confident, and it would be good to just benchmark some, some municipalities, even even Archville, which is the same size, and just kind of see what they've done. But you need to be able, like you guys was asking, to, we need to have a GPS system. It's just technology that's been out there for decades, and it's not terribly expensive, and it's not terribly difficult to manage.
What's terribly expensive?
I think it's affordable, when you do, when I say not terribly expensive, when you do a cost benefit ratio, it would be definitely less than one. Because the benefits will tremendously outweigh the cost that you're gonna invest in.
What's the cost?
I don't know the cost, all I can tell you.
Just rough, I guess.
Would we need to get vendors just to come in and evaluate?
Exactly, but.
Provide some proposals.
And a good thing you could do that doesn't cost much money is you could just do a benchmark study. Because when I was benchmarking for rates and stuff for the stormwater fee, Archville, I talked to Jim over there, I talked to direct, the public works director in Florence. Those guys were eager and gracious to sit down, explain their system, and Brian, Councilman Gardner, who gave to get, they would even share costs and everything. You know, so at least we can kind of get a feel, you know, for that.
Yeah, most of the largest systems tell a G I S stat.
Exactly, or at least one person.
At least one person.
At least, you know, at least one person, and the thing about it is that person doesn't even have to be full-time, but just at least have the capability. Like if something breaks, Freddie can say, okay, what I, what I have underground overall on Main Street, for example. The guy goes to the system, pulls it up, tells you the size of pipe, the elevation, the manhole, he tells you whether it's water, he tells you whether it's sewage. And so you, when you dig, you don't have to worry about breaking it. Tells you where your baths are, which is very incredible. So something we should consider if those are the budgets.
So we decided what we're gonna do as far as raising the rate, so we're gonna do that?
We're gonna accept the water.
Water sewer.
Just what you're proposing, like Freddie did.
So we're looking at about a dollar fifty, fifty cents, plus three percent equate to?
Fifty-four cents.
Fifty-four cents or a dollar anymore?
So what John was proposing? Is what you, okay. And that's what?
Down at the volume works, that's capital improvement.
I would, I know we also have a hundred and six thousand in the budget for stormwater that is a floater. Could be worse, could be better, but if we end up having some money sitting in it, I would propose that we take a look at maybe using some of that money or some money from somewhere and try to, and not take it all out of Freddie them, but. See if we can't come up, well, I'll take that back. Before we talk about money, I think we need to get Howard to make contact, he and Janie can talk about making contact, everybody's good with computers. And have somebody come in and do an evaluation, 'cause they don't charge to evaluate, because they hope that they make their money selling it. But have somebody come in and make some suggestions. Now, they will suggest all pie and sky stuff that you could imagine, but Howard and Janie ought to be able to filter through that and make some determinations as to what we need. Get by as opposed to just, you know, we may not need a gold-plated Rolls Royce, but we do need at least a decent running Chevrolet or Ford.
Long as not a Moped.
I don't think a Moped, I think a Moped is what we got. Somebody, we're, we're riding in the rain. Howard, can you get with some municipalities and find out who their vendors are? And perhaps getting the ball rolled to, to see what we, what's available.
That's, that's a specialized area, especially since it's water sewer that we're looking at. I know there's some, there are some vendors like that, do you have any ideas, or you don't, either one of y'all know? I know there's some, there are some vendors like that, do you have any ideas, or you don't, either one of y'all know?
Not, not all five rural waters got some dealings with G I S out here.
What I would do is benchmark first some local municipality, because you, they may be used in some local venues, which is always. But you want, this system is your water, your sewer, and it's, it does all of that infrastructure.
Looks like we need to take a break.
It doesn't recognize, it just.
Who's the stories? The mayor's gone.
You don't take a three minute break, you have to take a call.
Take a break.
Yeah, alright, take a break. I heard somebody.
Taking a three minute break.